Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. God, we do ask tonight that you be with us as we meet to discuss business for the school district. And God, I pray that you give us wisdom as we make decisions and God just guides us in the direction that you want the school district to go. God, we do thank you for this past week and the Thanksgiving holiday where we give thanks to you for all that you've done for us and all you've blessed us with. God, most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Our December 2nd, 2025, regular meeting to order.
It's like a wedding ceremony, forget the rings. As soon as she brings back your pen, Steve, we're going to honor you for a certificate of boardsmanship award for completing at least 25 hours of school board training.
Oh, it took you five minutes.
I was just glad I didn't have to sit there on the 31st and watch him deal go bad so I get it in by the end of the year.
I was proud even more than I did.
Do we need to share the pen?
Yeah, I'm gonna say like, I deserve at least a third of that. It's like a wedding and we forgot the wedding ring.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you.
And first up's Huntsville Middle School.
This is Supreme? Okay. Actually, if we can wait, our student, if we can be at the end, our student is playing a game and should be done soon, but she is, make sure I'm not lying, she is not here yet.
Okay, we'll move her there. All right, we've got the high school next.
One second. Okay, our Student of the Month is Senior Dodge Essery and he's here with his dad, Gary. Dodge is active in all kinds of groups and sports. He's on the baseball team. He is the FFA chapter president now. And I want to add this part, forget it. Dodge had a knee injury that held him out of football and then he got back again and then he had another knee injury. So football is kind of off the table for it and a lot of kids, a lot of seniors do this anyway, they kind of fold up senior year and don't do anything. Instead of that, Dodge has, he dove in and he's been involved. He became chapter president. He's also now on the mayor's youth council. And he has great leadership skills. He's a good example and encouragement to his classmates, peers. And he also is involved, he'll talk to business leaders. He stood before you a few weeks ago and presented to you. So very well spoken, very intelligent. He's one of the best of the best we have. We're very proud of him. And he aspires to be a baseball coach. And Ms. Pennington helped write this. She said, or an ag teacher. Is that true?
I think you'll switch one day.
Up next is Watson Primary.
I remember my glasses. I did that because I only did not, so I'm going to turn them off. Okay, my Employee of the Month. So in every school, and I would say, go as far as to say in every organization, you will find that one employee whose name by themselves is a title. And for me, I have Carrie. Carrie Beck, that's right. Okay, you know what I mean. They are the person that wear so many hats that you couldn't even come close to writing a job description for everything they do. They do things you don't even know needed to be done because they simply see a need and do it. They are the person that everyone in the organization goes to when they need something. And that's our Carrie. Having a Carrie means you have someone that you can tell pretty much anything, who, you have someone that can tell you pretty much anything you would need to know about our students. She stands in the hallway every morning, greets each one by name and gives them some sort of positive affirmation. Wow, you look handsome, or good morning, beautiful. Wow, I love that haircut. Something that lets each of those students know they were seen. Having a Carrie means you have someone that you can tell pretty, that can tell you pretty much anything you know, need to know about our school. She literally could probably write an anthology about Watson Primary, past, present, and probably future. Having a Carrie means you have a therapist. She is that person that anyone can count on to be a listening ear and know that whatever is shared stays kept between them. Having a Carrie also means that you have someone that works their heart out and takes on burdens of others, even when it means the burden to me, another plate spinning. And I just, like, I had to stop writing because I've been up here the whole board meeting talking about Carrie. But you all know her very well. You know that she is the hearts and the brains at Watson Primary. She knows our families, she knows our community, and she is literally everything to me. So, Carrie Beck is the one.
Next is Huntsville Intermediate.
All right, we are celebrating Miss Kristen Kelly tonight. We are so blessed to have Kristen as part of our HIS family. Her sweet smile and gentle spirit are a blessing to all of us. She's one of the sweetest people to work with. You can tell she loves what she does. She is incredibly helpful to both students and teachers. She constantly goes above and beyond in everything she does. She always checks in to see if anyone needs help and she never hesitates to lend a hand when you ask. Kristen is always soft-spoken and kind. She always has a positive attitude and is willing to help wherever she can. She is a true joy to be around and she loves the kiddo so much. Mrs. Kelly is always in a wonderful mood and greets everyone with a warm, genuine smile. She brings an uplifting energy to the school each day and creates a positive atmosphere for both staff and students. Even on difficult days, she has a way of brightening your mood, making you feel supported. Her kindness, positivity, and ability to make others feel valued truly makes a difference in our school community. She sets the bar high for work ethic. As someone new coming in, the students slide up around her and look up to her as a role model. Kristen is one of the most compassionate and dedicated individuals. Her strong work ethic and kind spirit are truly valued and greatly appreciated. She is an amazing person at work and out in the real world.
So we've got a sub for Bruce tonight and Matt's going to take over in the car. Fill in for him.
All right, I'll stand up here, I guess. Kim's not here, is she, Kim Smith? I'm going to go ahead and read this, though. Bruce sent this to me and I'm just going to read off their thoughts. So, "Some thoughts about Ms. Kim Smith, fourth grade teacher for her colleagues and students. From Coach Stone Lab, Kim retired in 2013 with 26 years of teaching experience. She came out of retirement in 2022 when we needed a fourth grade teacher. We were so fortunate that Kim agreed to come out of retirement and help us out at St. Paul. We are so blessed to have her as part of our staff-ality. From her colleagues, Kim Smith, an educator who has been teaching for generations and is truly one of the best. She was one of my favorite teachers growing up and now I'm fortunate enough to work alongside her. Kim is incredibly knowledgeable, knows exactly how to teach kids, meet them where they are, and makes learning fun while establishing strong routines and procedures. There are simply too many reasons to list for why she is so amazing. Kim believes wholeheartedly in every student's success, no matter what. She is one of the best teachers I've ever taught with, embracing everyone as family and jumping all in on any idea we come up with, even on short notice. Teaching with her has been an absolute joy because she knows how to have fun and makes sure everyone around her does too. Her students say it best. She is a very amazing teacher. She is kind, loving, and teaches the best things. Ms. Smith makes learning fun and makes it more flexible for us to do our stuff. Their words reflect exactly who she is each and every day in the classroom. We are truly grateful and blessed to know and teach alongside Kim Smith."
We'll go ahead. So if we don't mind, so we'll give the student, if you need a little bit more time, they're not here yet.
Yeah, she's still not here. Tammy said that she's texted them all, so I'm.
Okay, well, let's go ahead. If the FFA doesn't mind, let's recognize them and y'all come on up and then we'll give that student maybe a little bit more time and hopefully they'll be able to make it, so.
Okay, I will briefly introduce them. They're going to talk about how well they did at National FFA Convention. Valley is not here. She was in Atlanta all weekend. She left right after Thanksgiving dinner and went to Atlanta to represent our county and our state at National 4-H Congress, and her flight in Dallas was delayed. And so she's on her way back but didn't quite make it. And then Jade is playing ball tonight, and so she's not here. But they're going to talk about how their team did and then also just as a chapter, their experience at National FFA Convention. And then I'll follow up and tie it up.
So while competing at this National FFA Convention, we identified 40 retail cuts and we graded beef carcasses as well as pork carcasses. And we participated in a team event called formulation. And we basically calculated the amount of lean, muscle, and fat needed to produce a batch of 1,000 pounds of ground pork.
Okay, so when we were at National Convention, in our contest, we were 12th as a team, which was gold ranked, which is the top probably third. Individually, me, I'm Ashlyn Davis, Valiancy, and Jade were all individually gold, which is the top 50. And then Talon was silver, which is the top 100. And Valley was recognized for getting a perfect on her retail ID, which is meaning, which means that you get all primals, you get all species right, all the primals right, where it's, or what it's called, and the cookery. So it's, you have to get a lot of points to get a perfect, and it's really hard.
If y'all don't mind, say what year you are, what grade, so, I mean, what talent do we have coming back next year so we keep winning?
Jade's the only one coming back. However, when you get, make it to the national contest, you can't compete again.
You can't? What?
Yep, you get one shot.
So you got a mentor or someone gets behind it?
I kind of went as a tag along, so I really just hopped on the, hopped in the car and went up there. I actually had, I didn't think that I was going to be able to do that much up there, but I had the opportunity to go to the Career College Expo, which is pretty much a huge convention center full of colleges I can talk to about their animal social programs. And it's, it was absolutely awesome. I think every student should do it that goes through high school. I mean, I talked to a welding company, I talked to industry leaders and industry professionals, and I talked to professors at universities and I talked to colleges about admissions. And it's actually where I ended up finding my opportunity, where I applied to A&amp;M. So that was huge for me to absolutely go up there. I think every student should do it. So it was absolutely awesome.
Valley did score perfect. Ashlyn only missed two points off of her retail rail. Jade was nice, and then Talon. And I want to brag on Talon a little bit. He was drop score at our state contest on the team and kind of had to battle back and beat out another student. And so he worked, while going to football practice all summer, he still made time to push himself, be great on the football field, but also wanted to work on this. And then all of them currently have scholarship offers to Eastern Oklahoma to judge, meet and compete full scholarship to go there for the first two years. And then she feels very confident that once they finish there, they could go to Oklahoma State and judge for Oklahoma State. And so they all have offers there right now. Valley also has. Valley also has offers to Texas Tech and uh, West Texas A&amp;M. And so the great opportunity for them, it's not just something that like, we throw them on a bus and say, come on, let's go miss school. Like, we really are hoping to set them up for um, some opportunities either to go into a professional setting, um, working for Tyson or um, other meat companies, Cargill up north. But uh, we really do hope that they, you know, secure some finances for their future.
Very proud of y'all. Good leadership.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Victoria just finished a basketball game. Okay, um, for the middle school today, we'd like to recognize Victoria Prado. Um, she's an eighth grade student um, with us and I'm going to read several different things that several of your teachers have said to you because they think you're pretty amazing. Victoria is an amazing student who is always conscientious. She tries very hard and honors English and isn't satisfied until she has the highest grade. She will even compete on projects against students from past years. She has the ability to ignore chaos when she is fully engaged in her work and typically produces beautiful results. I would take a room full of Victorias. I can't think of a more deserving student. Somebody else said, Vicky is a model student athlete. She currently plays multiple sports and maintains a high grade in multiple honors classes. She is a lovely young woman and always has a smile. She deserves the recognition. Victoria is beautiful inside and out. She is always kind to everyone. She also produces exceptional work no matter what I ask the students to do. She is certainly deserving a recognition. Another teacher said, I have had the opportunity to have Victoria in class for the past year and a half. In that time, I have seen her drive, passion, dedication, growth, kindness, and her commitment to be the best version of herself. She, um, excuse me, her best lifts others around her. She juggles academics, athletics, and the arts beautifully. You should see her artwork. Huntsville School District needs students like her. She reminds us that having high expectations fosters an environment in which students thrive. And finally, Victoria is the type of student we want representing our school. Whether on the court, on the track, or in the classroom, she shines brightly. She has found the secret recipe of how to be a strong leader, stay true to her own compass, and still be humble and sincere in all she does. I am proud to recognize her on behalf of H I S.
So if y'all don't care, all of our, uh, the people that we recognize, we always like to get a picture with the board real quick if y'all don't mind. So one at a time.
A little crowded.
Our board vacancy for Zone One, and so um, talking with the ASBA and making sure we follow everything legally, um, we had two candidates file for the position. And the candidates are given five minutes to speak to the board as they choose or if they choose not to. And the first one we have up is Charles Crowder, and I don't think he's here tonight. Okay, since he is absent, up next is Mr. Bobby Gullidge.
Well, y'all know my story, I'm sure. And uh, nothing's changed. I graduated 1980 from St. Paul's school. I've never let go of it. I've always tried to be involved somehow. And ever since we got consolidated, like I said at first, me amongst many others over there didn't like it. I grew to like it real quick when I saw you, what, what you did for the school and continue to do. This is tough. I never would have resigned, but y'all know my story. And that's all I can talk about right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
All right, guys, so we're going to go into executive session to discuss, and then we'll be out.
Do we have a recommendation indoor motion from the board of filling the empty Zone One seat?
Make a motion that we um, appoint Bobby Gullidge back to his place on the board.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second. No, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Bobby. I'm excited for your kindness. We're not sure it's a one-off, but that's, that's your kindness that is shown for this school district over here. And for y'all who did show up for the team, thank you.
I mean, I'm pretty sure he can go ahead and take his seat.
He can take his seat? Okay.
All right, Bobby, come on.
He might not be able to vote today.
Right, but he can go ahead and take his seat. Yeah, right. He just won't bone on any items.
You'll have to get sworn in, you'll have to get re sworn in and at the courthouse.
All right, up next for academic report, we have Paula. Some great news.
Yes, um, I gave you guys a handout that looks like this. And so I wanted to talk to you for just a second about how those letter grades are determined. Um, so the new Atlas summative exam that's given in the spring tests ELA math and science. And so um, there are nine components to the grade for elementary schools. We'll start there because it's easiest. So the number of students who achieved, who achieved a three or four, which are the highest two levels. Um, the percentage of students who achieved that uh, is the point you get for ELA. Then the percentage of students who scored a three or a four in math gets you your points for math and then for science. But then in this formula, they also calculate the number of students who met their targeted growth. So growth, uh, for each student, they calculate on bet, on past assessments, what that student should score. So the percentage of students who met that growth, we get points for those. And that's for math, science, and ELA as well. And then they take the students who had scored in the bottom quarter of all students. And if those met their growth, you get to count them again. And so that gives you your next three scores and then that gets you a point total. And you can look on a table and it'll tell you how many points you have to get to be have an A or a B or a C, et cetera. Now for high school, it's a little bit different. They average that growth um, of the lowest 25 to, to be one score instead of three different scores. And then they give you a score for the percentage of students who graduated on time in their four years, ninth through 12th. And then the percentage of students who graduated with merit or distinction, which is not really fully in place yet, but will be coming. Um, I don't know if you guys know a whole lot about merit diplomas or distinction diplomas. We may need to do a whole explanation or report on that. But that, those success-ready pathways, which involves a lot of concurrent credit or CTE or AP courses, that won't be fully in place until the class of 2027. Um, so we're in a transition period right now. Um, and so to get the district letter grade, they took all the students in the whole district who scored a three or four in ELA math or science or who met their growth, um, and then graduated on time and was headed on a success-ready pathway to calculate our district rate. So this handout breaks down the number of students. So if you look at this, out of 1,284 students who were tested in ELA, 357 of them scored a three or a four, which gave us 27.8 points. Okay, and so this gives you the breakdown to get the nine scores for our point total. And then the table at the bottom shows that we scored a C as a district. And so we're not where we want to be, um, but we're also pretty happy that we're a C because there are a lot of districts that were a lot less than that. Um, so we're at a C, which is average, but we know that we're on our way up. And uh, but we wanted to share that since it's become a baseline score, this is going to be something we'll compare each year to see how we're doing, if we're going the way we want to be growing. So this just came out um, a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So we wanted to, to share this with you in case you haven't seen it yet and kind of celebrate a little bit. Um, while a C is not where we want to be, we're um, we're, we're happy. It's a good place to start. Okay, any questions about that? I know that was kind of a lot really quickly. Um, but you have any questions about how they're calculating letter grades? Okay, that's all I have for academic reports.
Thank you. Yeah, you have the consent items there, agenda. So I'll entertain any questions if we have any other items.
Does anybody have any questions? Take a motion to approve. Please, second my name. All in favor?
Thank you all. Next is the finance report. And so um, you know, we love Tina to death and, and so we've been praying for her and her family through everything. And, and so um, that's why it, we were getting it in here later and it wasn't included where it usually is. And uh, and that's, and I think y'all totally understand that. It's fully acceptable, so.
Everything still look good on track?
It's good. It's on track. We um, received our tax, some big tax dollars this month, so that was good. Um, gave the bonus, so it's always nice. Got the bonus, so it's always nice to have that tax revenue coming after that. Auditors are on site with us.
Yeah, I got their letter.
Did you? So anyway, it was a busy day.
Any questions left finance or court?
I get a motion to approve that?
Yep.
Second amendment, Steve, all in favor?
And up next is some more good news. Preston's going to talk a little bit about our fall sports.
I'm gonna come stand over here if that's okay.
Please.
Just wanted to give you an update. This is my third year here and our fall sports this year have just really done great. We're really proud of our athletes and our coaches for the work that they're putting in. And I just wanted to update you on things that have happened and how we finished. Our golf team had four individual qualifiers for the state tournament this year, which is the most we've had since I've been here. And we had another one. As a matter of fact, the two boys that went, one of them finished in a playoff hole against one of our other guys. We were that close to having three there and one of ours beat our other one to make it as an individual. So had a great year there in golf. Our cross-country team, our senior girls finished 14th at state overall, which is a great finish for them. Two, three years ago when I got here, we didn't even have enough girls running to make a team. And so now we're competing at the state level. Our boys finished eighth at state and we had one of our runners that made all-state this year. He finished 23rd overall. And we had four different boys and three different girls make all-conference. I would list them and name them all, but I would forget somebody and I would just rather email y'all with all the names. That's okay. I don't have them all written down. But four boys and three girls made all-conference in cross-country, which is the best we've had. Our volleyball, there's been a lot of publicity and rightfully so about them. They won the regular season conference championship this year. First time, I believe, since 2017 that that had happened. District tournament champs. I don't even know the last time that happened. It's been a while. We had also made the state tournament for the second straight year. Six different girls made all-conference and then two girls were all-state in volleyball. Football, we finished the year with five wins, which was a really good year for us where you could tell we're moving in the right direction and we're excited about those guys. We had a playoff appearance and got to go to Southside and play in the playoffs. I can't tell you how many made all-conference yet because we still have play teams in our conference that are playing and we can't release that until everybody's officially out of the playoffs. But I will say that we will have more all-conference team members this year than we've had the previous two years combined. And so those kids are getting a lot of recognition that they deserve for the effort that they put in. I want to say this too, as I was just sitting over there looking and listening. Every student that was recognized today or that presented to you guys as an athlete in our athletic program. And that makes me smile as big as anything to see not only them excel in athletics, but also on the academic end as well too. I don't know how many kids I've told in my career that athletics is fun, but 99% of us aren't going to get to go play in college. You have to get the grades and you have to do the academics right as well. So I'm proud about that. Coming up, and then I'll wrap up right quick. Our winter sports are going. Our cheer team finished third place in their first competition a couple of weeks ago. Their state competition is in about three weeks. Bowling starts tomorrow with their first match of the year. Wrestling has gone right now to Subiaco for their first wrestling match of the season. Basketball is playing right now over at the arena. It's our Toys for Tots night, so if you've never seen that or been a part of it, come watch it here in a little bit. When I left, the junior girls were winning 32 to six, so that was a pretty good start there for them. St. Paul's playing basketball tonight at home and they're rolling full speed ahead. So it's constant. Everything's going. I talked to somebody today and I told them yesterday was our quote day off and I worked 12 hours yesterday. I left the house at 10 and got home at 9:48. That's the normal and I love every second of it. So I don't want you to think that's a complaint. That's just what I get to do. I enjoy it. So thank you all. I'm proud of our kids. I'm proud of our coaches. Our coaches are working hard and they are... How do I say? I want to say this. I have seen more positive impact on our character development in our teams this year through our coaches than I've seen in a long time and I'm extremely proud of that too. They're working hard on not only making our kids better athletes, but better people too. And I'm extremely proud of that. So thank you, Mr. Chalk Jay. Man, I haven't done that in a long time. Thanks for letting me share this this morning evening. And if y'all will excuse me, I'm going to head back to the arena to make sure everything's going well there.
Thank you Coach.
Thank you all.
And I know you'll know what a big deal that is because I'm telling you, by however many years I've been the superintendent in three different places, this is the first time that I remember in a semester that every sports team qualified for state. You know, that's a pretty big deal. So we're proud of them all. Up next, we have the action items and Matt's going to go over some policy updates quickly.
Okay, yeah, quickly. So you all got the cover letter last month just to kind of look at on these policy updates. So there's not a whole lot to them. One thing I did want to point out, and your copy should be the same, but our licensed personnel, it says parental leave, that's ASBA policy. We have updated ours to say maternity leave. So we just do moms and not dads. We had the option to do that and we chose, you all approved that a long time ago. But I just wanted to point that out as a change that we've done locally. And then they just added some verbiage in there, public school instead of a district, just so if somebody transfers in and they have a baby, they're still eligible for maternity leave. And then an employee will be compensated at the employee's daily rate of pay, just to make sure that that happens. That's an ASBA update. So 3.56 and 8.46 are the same policy. One is for classified and one is for certified, so no extra changes there. 4.47 is the possession and use of personal electronic devices. They added some verbiage in that for students that are taking concurrent credit courses that may have to use their phone for two-factor authentication, which we do for our emails and all that as well. So that's understandable. So those kids can get their phone out and do that and then put it back on. 4.5 is just, they added verbiage just to line up with the law. So we, ASBA recommended that verbiage, so that's what we're recommending for you to approve.
Any questions over the policy changes? I get a motion to approve. Natalie, Nick, all in?
So I appreciate y'all because I mean this. At other places where I've been superintendent, you know, we went back and looked at policy and it hasn't been addressed or looked at in 10 years. And so I do, I hope y'all don't mind, as a board, you know, we come to you every other month or so with those updated policies to make sure we're legally, you know, within those guidelines and everything's been vetted by attorneys and it's good to go. So thank you all for that. Well, as you tell, I told Matt to speed up. I need you to slow down because I'm waiting on hearing real quick.
I did want to point out one more thing. Sorry, I'm playing the reverse card.
That's good.
On 4.5, the school choice, the first, I go 4.5. Yeah, the first paragraph is something that we did not include in our policy. Talks about desegregation and you have to have court approval for that. And so we actually take that first paragraph out of our policy. I should have done that for you on your copy, but I wanted to point that out before we officially move on. The exemption paragraph. Because we are not exempt from school choice.
Harry had to drive and so he had just gotten off his bus and he was trying to hurry over. So if y'all don't mind, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about it. Maybe if he comes in, he can, if you have any questions for him. So basically what we're asking for is for a bus purchase. If you remember, I wasn't here, so I don't know. Y'all could probably refresh my memory better. I guess at St. Paul, we had a bus catch on fire or something?
Yes, I guess, or lightning, I think is what the...
Yeah, that burn up. Well, of course, we got the insurance money for it and this is the replacement that he's asking for. But there's two buses that are possibilities and he's going to go look at both of them. The most expensive one is $75,000. And so the other one's cheaper, but I told him, hey, we want to get the most bang for our buck and you tell me which one you think's the best. And that's the one that, you know, we'll talk about. But I think we're okay. If y'all wanted to have a motion and go ahead with the $75,000 purchase and if it happens to be the cheaper one, then he could go ahead and do that.
Second amendment, Steve, all in?
Thank you. And I mean, I don't have anything, any cause for executive session. There's, I mean, as far as the personnel goes, so.
So we'll need a motion to approve this minus Tatiana Diaz. She has rescinded her, she does not know one of the positions. So we strike her off. So the motion will include everyone but her. Received, for Monday, all in?
Any business?
I don't like it when you read those lists off.
Oh, I get it. So our resignations were classified. Abigail Johnson, WPS custodian, which was effective November 7. And then the hires were classified. Rachel Holm, Huntsville High School's special ed paraprofessional. That would be 12-3. Calvary Ackerman.
Calvary.
Ackerman, WPS maintenance for 12-3. Amber Hendricks, special education paraprofessional, 12-3. And Rachel Roberts, intermediate school kitchen worker, effective 12-3.
How are we coming around salary schedules?
We are. I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, that's good. I give credit where credit's due. Bailey and Matt have been working very, very hard on those with our PPC committees. And we are getting very close. And I, you know, we've talked about it and had multiple meetings that, you know, we might have to ask for y'all to come back before we get out for Christmas break to have a call meeting to accept those salary schedules. But we are very close and I don't want to speak for them, but we are. There's just some things, it's, y'all, it's very, and I'll just say this. It's very difficult. I mean, you've got your pie. It's hard to fit everything into those to where, you know what I mean? And, but I will commend them. They've worked really, really hard on that because there's some tough things you got to try to figure out, you know. And plus, of course, legally, we can't deduct anybody's salary. So to try to make everything fit and make it, you know, uniform across the board takes a lot of work and that's why it's taken some time. But they are involving our employees, the PPC committees in both and all that to get everything lined out. And I think they will be, everybody will be very, very happy once we come to that point.
Yeah, and also I work with a certified PPC and I've gotten a lot of really good feedback and has helped me create something that I feel like is going to be good for everybody in the district, all of our certified staff. So big shout out to the PPC for their feedback and their help with it throughout the process. We meet again, I think it's either the 10th or the 17th of this month with PPC. So hopefully I can have something to finalize for them by then.
You got your bus here.
Yes. I mean, put you on the spot.
No, I mean, I just, you know, classified is obviously something I'm very passionate about and trying to make sure that we can get them where we want to pay them. And I mean, Jay's been great to work with and we just, it's just a tedious process. And, you know, one thing is that like, just when you're looking at one lane and you just change, you know, a step 50 bucks, that adds $100,000. You know, like it adds up quickly when you've got that many people in the lane. So I mean, we're, at the end of the day, regardless of what has changed, I hope it's known that we are trying our absolute best to get everything we can for them.
And I do, I commend these two again. I mean, we, what we're working with is what we hope that our people want. And that's why they've both been working really well with the PPC committees of, what do you want? What do you want this to look like? Because you need their buy-in, you know. And so I'm very proud of that fact. But, you know, not all the times, you know, am I going to be the favorite? That's why y'all hired me. Because sometimes you're going to make some decisions of where, hey, this isn't fitting somewhere and how are we going to go about it? But, and I've made, you know, I've always been transparent, y'all, totally. You know, my goal and my vision is, is for us to at least give everyone a raise every year, even if it's a cost of living that's a small percentage. I just feel like, and then y'all know that one of my main things was, you know, the federal poverty level. We had to get above that in a position. And also with some other things that we've been totally upfront with them about, but they've been great to work with. Every time I've been to a meeting with both PPC committees, they've been very grateful and easy to work with on everything, which is totally, I mean, that's awesome.
Off subject. Did they ever get power to run into the baseball building?
So I talked to Scotty Burks last week sometime and he said that they, the Transformers, which I've seen, they sent me a picture, Ken Ko sent me a picture of that. But he said that this week that we're currently in, they were going to hook up power to it.
Well, I drove my wife over three days ago and I thought I seen poles coming across the lower end and I was hoping that, because I mean, Lord, they'd be practicing in there.
Yes, yeah, and I will say, you know, Ken Ko's waiting on that power to be hooked up to finish the floors and there's some things that they've got to do once the power is turned on.
Right.
That's going to take probably three weeks of work for them to get done. So, you know, I hate it, but, you know, we're looking sometime in January, you know, get them in there.
That's still better than April.
Well, it's not better than October.
Not better than October.
By the end of October, we would be in there. And, but, I mean, we're where we're at and we're trying to get it done as quickly as possible, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all. I think I'm going to go ahead. Second amendment, all in? Welcome back Bobby.